Okay, it is March 7th, 2022. A few minutes before 10 o'clock, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Hamill.
Here.
Blue Murphy, here. Number four, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, February 24th, 2022. Any additions or corrections, did anybody see?
I don't have any. I'm gonna approve those. All right.
On favor.
Aye.
Number five, approve or disapprove monthly reports for the following: Assessor, County Clerk, Court Clerk, Election Board, Health Department, Trade Bureau's office, and Sheriff.
And they're all here.
Why? Should we approve those?
We approve those.
Second. On favor. I have more modular than you, I just found one place, but I don't find any place on this unless I'm missile.
I think it's the seventh.
There. These are in a big little box.
Yeah, that's next.
Okay. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
Up, down, all around?
Uh, looks like down on this one about, I don't know, 5,000, 149. So it was relatively close. How much approve?
How much votes we accept those?
On favor.
What kind of welder you got on it?
Oh, it's a little video, 140. Whole little, uh, cold in your hand.
Little one, you get?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another one.
Got a couple others. I got, I got like a 140 and then I bought one like, like yours. I just, I don't need that little one.
Right.
I have never used it, drilled it.
That they can drill a hole in it?
I mean, I have, but it's on a little trailer, the trailer don't go. It's a little little lever like a farmer would have, you know? I don't know how much it weighs, but I don't know if I could get it in there by myself or not.
Yeah.
But I bet I can get it in.
We had one sitting in front of the shed one time, trucks all parked in it. Somebody stole it, they picked it up and carried, two guys, two guys, but I'll give it to you. They were, they picked it up and carried it, put it on the trucks. Just walked out with it, along with everything else. Had all our silos, we locked them in a grain room. And we put bars across the door, locked three locks, like some doors. They left the torch in the bar, they took the torch out there and cut a hole inside the grain room. Stole all our silos. They could've cut the bars off, just opened the door, but hell no, they cut a hole right outside the grain room. Left the torch.
Okay. Discussion, possible action regarding the opening of a bid for a through-the-tenant pickup to rule our District Number 3 grant.
Um, we received one bid from Croft. And that's it.
Is that total electric?
I hope not. But I wouldn't have it.
The question mark is gonna be whether you get it, can get it.
Yeah, that might be 20.
No delivery.
Yep.
So the price is $36,995. And it's a good bid.
Very good.
2024.
Yeah, 2023 Chevy. 6.6 liter gas.
Shouldn't be the long bed, single cab.
6.6. Just cabin chassis.
Right, without the bed.
Molly, just 10 miles, they must have it. He can do it on her.
He has one up there, but I didn't ask him. I visited with Steve.
You need it right now?
Do what?
Do you need this truck right now?
Well, just, you know.
Soon as possible?
Whenever, yeah, we're ready, I've got the.
Bed and everything ready?
Got it coming, it may take two, three weeks.
It doesn't say when you can get it, but here, here's the bid.
Okay. Well, I'm good with that, I mean.
With that price, you might look it over just to make sure.
Right, and I will. My own myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's with that discount, that's a good price.
We can let you look that over, Tommy, and, and you tell us when it's good or not, we'll move on, how's that?
That works for me. And then we'll come back to it.
Yeah. Okay, let's go down to number eight, discussion and possible action regarding use courthouse lawn for the Baham breakaway from 21st, 20, uh, 2022.
So move.
This would be the same as those. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
And I guess they'll probably give you, you bring some sand.
Yes. Hell, they cannot give us a sandwich. They did give it to us and let us haul back, that's the water sand from out there. They might say that.
Okay, number nine. Discussion, possible action regarding letter of support for the infrastructure of the city of Alba's water system. Now, I read this last week, and if you guys want me to read, I'll just go ahead and read. And it says, "To whom it may concern, on behalf of Woods County, please accept us letter of support for the city of Alba and their proposal to receive American Rescue Plan Act funds for their water system upgrades. Our rural community believes heavily in the city's ability to provide consistent running water to serve this community and the people within. It is also important to keep our volunteer firefighters and first responders safe by having working facilities in the station of residences. In conclusion, we fully support the efforts of the city of Alba as they seek funding and support of strengthening the infrastructure of their water systems so they may continue to provide, provide consistent and quality service to their community and to others who may be impacted."
Now, that just goes along with their letter of application?
I guess, 'cause I mean, I didn't, I, I didn't want to commit to any amount of money or anything, I, all I'd asked for is our support, and I don't know, I mean.
I don't have problems with that.
I'm not gonna deny that, if.
Right.
So, you guys good with that?
So move.
Made it second, on favor?
I'll say, yeah.
Aye.
Start with seven or eight. Number 10, discussion, possible action regarding the P card policies and procedures made.
Okay, so.
Would you explain this to me just short?
Yeah.
Well, that P card, we've gotta have for the clearinghouse.
For the CDLs.
CDLs. So, um, we're gonna need to go ahead and I just, what I did is I just changed the, um, to Woods on here.
Is that something that we can use for, to hold, to hold motel rooms or to?
Yes. I suggest that we let Jennifer be in charge of the P card and if they need a motel that.
The less, the less hands that are on it, the better off we are.
The, and I think if, if the hotel will continue to take a PO, we ought to do that.
Right, right.
But we are running into that, because I ran into it, I used my credit card and.
Last week, spray screen.
Yeah. So I think if we just use it for the clearinghouse and motels and let her be in charge. Yeah, and then that way we won't be getting ourselves.
Well, this isn't actually our policy and procedure, this is what? To have a P card, you're supposed to agree.
Yes.
This is theirs. So, we, we need to adopt it according to their policies or whatever. And we can follow the P card like we're talking, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, and just let Jennifer be, tell us which is, what's the proper way to do it and not, you know?
Her and I both have taken the class so that we both will know how it has to be.
But we're just adopting this, this agenda item right here, it's just that we follow their.
I'll move that we adopt that.
Their procedures, yes.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 This next one, next one's a little bit trickier.
Number 11.
Yes. Okay, so regarding the P card travel policy, we have to choose options. And we have to turn all this into OMs, so that they know how we are going to use. So, like the mileage rate.
Well, we got two agenda items here, below that. I mean, discussion and possible action regarding the P card travel policy.
Travel policy, it's right here.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Uh-huh, that we have to make choices.
What about the next one, you mentioned OMs.
Uh, yes, it's a request letter, if I can find it.
Okay, well, as long as it's two separate deals, that's what I'm wanting to know.
Yeah, it is.
So 11, discussion and possible.
What is the travel policy?
Yes.
And we got a couple of options.
Yes, we've got options, so I put notes by it that we gotta pick. This here, we're gonna pick, we're gonna decide if we're going to start paying mileage at, uh, the point of where the individual leaves. Or at the county line, or at the courthouse.
I, I think where they leave, yeah, where their home is.
Yeah, 'cause I wouldn't be silly to have to drive in here to. If you're clear out, you'd free them or one of them, and have to drive to the courthouse.
I'd say from, I'd say from.
Okay.
So Mark.
On that one.
From where they leave.
Okay. And the next one is.
Hotel expenses for overnight travel, when overnight travel is necessary. Doesn't look like options, it says that if the travel on official county business can be conducted within hours of normal work day, the county will not be responsible for overnight launch. No brainer. So, and that's the only option.
Yeah.
And then the, the next one is meals, unless the county has adopted a per dim policy. The county will pay only the customary three meals per day per individual, the county will reimburse, pay for meals up to, and it's a blank for a dollar amount per individual. And the individual will be responsible for costs in excess of this amount. The county will not pay for snacks and drinks not associated with the meal or for alcohol. I, I think we should do, my opinion is the county will pay only the customary three meals per day per individual.
Right, now we just gotta figure out what that one's gonna be.
I don't wanna put a dollar amount on it, 'cause who knows?
You don't wanna put one?
We don't have to.
Not on that. The second one has that dollar amount.
Right.
I mean.
It'd be impossible right now to put a dollar.
Right.
Right, we just don't know.
And hamburger costs $10 today, tomorrow it might be 15.
Exactly, that's true.
And now, I wanna ask this of you, I mean, a lot of times I went with several employees and, and rather than, and usually we have a reimbursement deal. But, so I am just paying for everybody's, is that still gonna be a doable deal, or do you want each individual?
I.
I mean, I don't have to do that, but it just saves them having to get reimbursed.
Right. Um, as long as auditors are good with that, I don't, I don't see why there's a.
Well, I mean, I always, if I'm gonna do it, I provide a ticket to show and.
And it tells what names, who it is.
We try to list on there who it is.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Only thing an auditor would cry about would be a tip.
Right, they do, but they just gonna have to cry about it, I mean, that's truth to it or whatever.
Right, they just think that it should be.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys want.
That's strictly an opinion, theirs compared to somebody else's.
Uh-huh.
'Cause it's not listed on here about that.
No.
Well, I don't know why that, I mean, I, I understand why that would be wrong.
Right.
Well, that's my preference of the three choices, if you guys wanna look at it.
No, I'm good with that.
Oh, yeah, but I meant, of that course.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Oh, and if the meal is not associated with overnight travel, it will be a taxable fringe benefit to the individual.
And I think they're just stating that, I don't think that's, that's just, that's just federal law.
Okay.
That if we would pay someone, then their taxes.
Or, they said, or, the county will not reimburse the meals not associated with overnight travel.
Well, we never have.
We do.
Yeah.
We what?
We never have anyway. Took care of meals unless they stayed overnight.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, yes.
Oh, here, now, this is more of that same deal. I maybe should've, I maybe jumped the gun, 'cause it says tips, not to exceed percentage of the total bill. Or, maybe this is another deal, but it didn't have a heading, you see what I'm saying? But it is, starts with A and B.
Yeah.
Uh, tolls with proper documentation. Yeah, that's printout from up on the turnpike authority handles detailing tolls associated with a particular route. I think receipts is the first option.
Right, I do too.
Um, do you wanna set a percentage on the tips or?
Well, yeah, but the thing is, usually if you're, if you do it in large groups, they're gonna charge you, I mean, they ask more, but you don't have to, I guess.
Well, sometimes they add it on the bill.
That's true, they do.
And I don't know, it used to be 15%.
Right, well, if we didn't go over 20, we should be okay.
I would just put 20 in there.
Yeah, I would.
I guess if somebody pays more, you can only reimburse them 20%.
Right. Yeah.
So. Airfare, parking fees, other means of travel as deemed necessary by the county. I guess that's, if that, if those occasions arose, I think that they should be reimbursed, I, do we just circle all of them?
Yeah, well, I could circle B and then it'll be what, whichever one you circle there.
Well, B is the county will not reimburse for meals not associated.
Sorry.
I mean, we, we did these two, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, I would.
Leave it open in case something.
Well, I'm just gonna go ahead and circle on it, if, if need to pay for airfare, we can, parking fees, or other means of travel as deemed necessary for the county. I wonder if we need to mark these, or if that's just the case, no mileage reimbursement made the claim by the individual for travel on the county-owned vehicle.
And that's just, we, yeah, we just know that.
Yeah, so, commuting is, is necessary for an employer, county official to drive a county-owned vehicle to, from work to county home, account for the actual fringe benefits required in terms of hours, commuting bills for employees.
I think that's enough, I mean, probably done.
Yeah, I mean.
I think these are just other options that we.
When elected official possibly receives the night travel warrant, that's.
I think that's just info.
District traffic, if the county has not adopted a per dim. It says you remove it, this paragraph.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just removed that, and see, I tried to get it to let me take that out, 'cause I knew it would probably be different, but it wouldn't let me take it out.
So is there more? Or more?
Here's the other, other page, um, and then it's just got like the stat, statues on it, come with all that. And then I've got a place for you guys to sign.
So we just decide who we got going and where, and we'll just call Jennifer, have her set it up?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
That'd be the best.
Right, and most, I mean, there's, yeah, 'cause you guys are having trouble with that, like Aco and Coda, we're still not having a problem with that. And probably never will, 'cause it's set up.
Right, right.
But like the county clerk school, I had to use my credit card to make arrangements for my, our April, because.
Does Ethan have to do that, or most, can he get most of his still PO?
Um, he may have to once in a while too, so he may have to call her and let her do it too. But that's okay, I mean.
Right, no, I mean.
It's not real awful.
These are not something we can reach out to.
Yes.
And one person can be manageable, he's gonna have a couple.
Now, what is?
Yes.
Is Sheriff, or can you send, can you run to that?
Well, they have a credit card, but they can only use it for, for travel.
Okay, on this, this last one, I, it, it says, we have to choose any or all of these options, and it says vicinity mileage and is the mileage incurred in addition to the map mileage available on the statewide mileage table. For example, business miles, travel to, location on it, listed in the tables, miles traveled around the metro location, like blah, 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 all that. But here, it has three choices or all of them, GPS, odometer readings, other mapping programs. I think we did, and it says choose any or all deemed appropriate for your county. I think just, we all, whatever is, whatever they do, that's a choice, I mean, I mean.
Yes, I think all those too.
Okay. All right.
And then we can set, we probably need to set a limit for Jennifer. Um, a card limit, most of them, I mean, all this I read, it's usually, I mean, no one can have like over a $5,000. So we can put that.
Is that a per month deal, or a year, or?
I don't know, it's probably.
It's card limit, when you go to get it in a day.
Yeah.
Okay, you know.
Say somebody stole it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, at one time, okay.
Couple of grand. Is that gonna be enough?
I don't know.
We'd have to make it to rooms, I mean, 'cause like my room, this room, I said, this.
Like that Aco down there, we booked 25 rooms.
Yeah, we had five rooms.
Five grand, okay.
Will that be enough, I mean, what's the level on it?
We might even up that.
2500 for, at a hundred bucks a night, so for 25 rooms, probably won't be more than that, so.
Oh, I just.
At 200, that'd be 36,000, so 25 would be 5,000, so.
No, no.
Okay.
Never gonna have that many rolled down there though.
Okay, okay, does this take care of both of these agenda items, or is the OMs deal a different?
Okay, so then, yeah, it's a different.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion that we approve what we just went over, these things here, we got two bills to sign.
On the options?
Yes, for number 11.
So move.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
On favor.
Chose all the options, right?
Right, we, we went through and listed us what we talked about, and then the second page here we got to sign is, uh, a mail for Jennifer too. We'll do this one more item, Tommy, and then you're, we'll come back to you. Okay, number 12, discussion, possible action regarding your request letter, OMs for the P card. And this is, uh. It just says we're, we're interested in, in participating in the state P card program, blah, 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 so.
I'm in with you, sir.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Who did that?
David.
That's what I thought, I started writing that, wait a minute, did I hear you write?
We'll try to stump you a little bit.
Back and forth.
Back and forth.
Okay, Tommy, does it look good?
Yep, I'm good with this.
Okay.
I'll leave this here, correct.
Why don't you run, Tommy, he might as well take that for his board, Andy.
Right, I think, well, here I get this, oh, start that pretty well and get the signatures and then.
So we need a motion?
Yeah.
You will come in.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do, accept this bid from everyone. Watch, draw.
Get away. Wait, you guys gonna keep your old one, Tommy?
Well, the, the old one, we're not.
Well, the, the old one, we're not, the one I'm driving right now, yours, the two fat of eleven, yeah, it's a good one. Right there.
You want part right out front?
I didn't know, I have to.
Do you have parts right out front?
Yeah.
No.
The one you're driving now or the old?
We're gonna keep the one I'm in right there.
That one there?
Yeah.
More here, do you want? Yes.
Alright, number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding the surplus of a welder ID number three D four zero four point zero one three and Chevy pickup ID number three D three zero one point one three two for District Three.
Thank you. Little welder, uh, don't use it much, got a couple other welders, uh, the pickup, uh, we're gonna take the welder and the pickup down to the CED auction today and it should sell.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow, Friday or Saturday is when the.
Yeah, okay.
That's when the sale.
Alright, so that's in form of motion, that's.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Are you gonna go down there and say?
Didn't plan on it. You got something down there?
No. I don't think it'll see what it sells, I'm sure.
They'll sell.
Yeah, they'll sell.
Or different one, one of the.
Yeah, regardless, they're gone.
Okay. What year is that Chevy pickup?
Two, uh, twenty-three? The one you bought?
No, no, it's about a year, it's about a whole eight or so.
I'm just curious.
Three quarter time. It's a red one that, uh, used to be the Foreman pickup oldest, maybe not the oldest one I got, but it's.
I'm just, I'm just curious. Any new business?
No. It's only not to.
Alright, approved, disapproved blanket purchase order.
I'm moving best to the.
I'll second. They were? Aye. They were sixteen, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.